Everybody ready? Called meeting in order. Anybody want to voluntarily recite the pledge of allegiance?
I approve the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the agenda. No additions or corrections.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Bernard, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll's name? Motion passes. Approve consent agenda. Four events, modest financial, private activity funds, several bills, state CH pants, and payroll. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Datsram, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Poll's name? Motion passes. Public comments? Anybody put your name in the minutes? Work comments?
I guess I got something I'll bring to the table, Chris, concerning the community center. I'm wondering if we're doing our due diligence with the community center as far as keeping it maintained, because you know, it is a public space. And I realized Friday night was a god awful wet night and a lot of stuff's gonna get broken. I don't know if all of that necessarily always gets pushed off until a Monday morning or whatever. But even like last year, a couple of times I attended some public meetings in the board, you know, in the meeting room there. And I think that's used for study ball or classroom almost daily. It could use going over, in my opinion, you know, a little more often. There's other groups, the township groups coming in during the week. And I don't know if it's a matter of assigning labor or checking off and make sure that it's getting, something is getting done. But I'm sure that all of us would feel being that it's a public space and we're the majority using it, we keep it looking good for everybody else that comes in because I think it kind of falls back on school.
And Tyler is in charge of women, um, and after a football game, he's not gonna be here till Monday, you know. Whether, and that's, I know I've come by on Sunday and he's following, so I don't know. Probably keeps his hours or whatever, so he doesn't.
Sure.
That's, that's the thing, whether it's, if it is, um, I might throw a scout into the bus a little bit. If it is something the football players are breaking in on a Friday night, maybe they handle the room, take a look at your mess. You know, that could be something the players can do. I understand homecoming, they were all trying to maybe get to Lidl or whatever too, so. But yeah, I mean, it can be, um, maybe discuss with Tyler on the schedule.
I think it's something that Jay can keep an eye on and maybe figure out a schedule with where it would be deemed to be the best to maybe, you know, check it on a regular basis and stuff. I mean, even last spring, this came back to me as the SRCT board person. After they had their spring honors banquet in there. Within two weeks, the comments came back to me from other member schools that came over here. They were wondering what's changed in winter. It used to always be so clean in there and look so good and maintained. And it was the next day, we, the school had a function in there where it was an education group coming in to spend the day in there doing stuff. And I volunteered to come and help set up. I ended up sweeping and mopping the whole room and part of the other one were very set up tables. Not saying that, you know, I'll do what needs to be done, but it just, it needed, when you got other groups coming in, I feel we should present that. That's all I wanted to bring to the table.
And I will agree with him because I mean, there are a lot in the winter and it does not look very presentable. And in the work of students as well, because I know the character of the student. Yeah, well, we should bring her back to the work of.
You know, how we address it, you know, our maintenance guy's the one cleaning it. We had outsourced the cleaning of the school, so how do you, you know, unless there's kids after school or something, I'd wanna help out. We can put it out there and see if, I mean, even if they, if they did it twice a week.
One, like Saturdays or something, like once a weekend?
Yeah, or even, yeah, or even once a week during the weekend, but I'll keep it clean throughout the week, you know.
Yeah, it's on the weekend, look at you.
Yeah, none of this has been cleaned, but is there somebody that goes around, I don't know if you've seen your credit names, but like all the lights were just on in the reason, and went around and showed them all the hallways in the gym. Is that, I mean, I don't know how that usually works with the football, I'm not usually there. But it does, they use, one of you two usually go around the gym, okay? Okay, I just was curious.
Usually the floor is not like that.
I think you had got that.
I don't saw a hurricane and went through that door because that door was on. That was part of the problem. They weren't willing to do that, right? But I could put the light back on once they turned it off. It would've been a great thing.
Okay, uh, correspondence?
Yeah, none.
Old business, we have none. New business? Approve twenty-five, twenty-six mill levy expenditure. I don't think we'll share any of this one, some of our budget.
Okay.
If, if, if you're ready or.
Yeah, no, I can. So in July, you set our preliminary budget. And the only number that has changed since July is the tuition revenue levy. Um, we had to decrease from, I think it was one.
Hundred eighty-six five.
Thank you. Down to seventy thousand, um, because we found out that we cannot include, um, the money that we paid to SRCTC because it's not itemized by student. And that is part of the issue with levying for tuition is you can't, you can't just use a blanket amount. It's gotta be in line item for students, so like NBCDE classes, that's in line item by kid, we can show who, you know, each class that's being paid for. And then the other part of the seventy thousand is the, um, outsourcing for special education students that we have that are our students, they're in our district, but they are getting, um, educational services elsewhere. Um, we can include that because again, that's itemized to a specific student, so that's why we lowered that. But otherwise, everything is the same as, as before. I know one thing, um, Chris asked me about, and I'll just clarify for you guys too. If you look at the, the budget listing, um, the first few, the first set of numbers is all the revenue for the general fund. And if you compare this year's foundation aid payments to last year's, it's, it's gone down a pretty decent amount.
Two hundred forty-eight thousand though.
Yeah, and that's because our enrollment is lower than it was last year.
That is the difference from last year's state funding to this year's state, I just subtract it. So whether that, well, it reflects lower, but it also is a two and a half percent increase.
Right.
So that increase is in there, so if you were to look at apples to apples, you'd have to take that two and a half percent increase out of that. So it would be a lot higher, so enrollment hurts.
I'll make these students every now.
I have to look at last year's. Yeah, so I wanna say nine, but don't worry, let me, let me pull it up. Sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine.
And maybe the point, but yeah, enrollment makes a difference.
Enrollment does, because it, we're, we're two hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars difference from state funding from last year to this year in the negative, and that's after the two and a half percent increase that we got from the state. So like I said, apples to apples, we would pull the two and a half percent out of that, it would be a lot, that number would be a lot bigger. But, and I don't know, um, Harold Tana, whenever he comes, he will explain, but this is last year's numbers. But I look at, um, what it costs us to, um, and this is a little off the budget, but it, it costs us from freshman to twelfth grade, it costs us fifteen thousand, fifty-one dollars to educate ones. Um, those are numbers we like to look at, um, compared to other schools, how we're doing. When Harold comes here, kindergarten's thirteen thousand, five hundred, um, one through six, fourteen thousand, five hundred five. And seven through eight is just, just under fourteen thousand. So we'll see that when Harold comes, he'll compare it, um, to other ones, but that's, that's a number I like to look at, um, where we compare.
And is that including like circumcuffs? Or like how do they determine, how they write it down?
The list goes on our last year's budget, so it's already complete, so that's one.
But I mean, it's like salaries and books and supplies, I mean, it's all the expenses to operate the school by head pounds.
So I'm, well, that's the number he's gonna use, so that's in there. I pulled that from two pages ahead. There was just something else in the bottom of that, so, um, it's, it's nice to look at, those are the numbers that I like to compare. Um, I remember back where that's kind of where we normally have a bank, so. Any other?
Any other questions?
And we are, if we talk, I will say, um, we're at a three percent gap, and that's where we're at. So we can't raise anymore funds, get our max out. Um, I don't think, um, our top of the sharing, the building fund is roughly, I looked up, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar, um. We, we will bank twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars in building fund with expenditures, um, if we pass the rule tonight, um, through the twenty mills, we cover, um, should cover everything and have a little bit left over to either build up or make some breaks. Yeah. The school's in, the roof's fixed, the plumbing's fixed, ACs, heat, heating, I mean, all the. Yeah. The top of the tuition, obviously. The miscellaneous revenue levy that is.
That goes into the general fund, is that just helps with the general?
That we can levy to help with the general fund because that's where we're maxed out at the three percent. So, and then when we get down, just to jump down, the special assessment covers the city's special assessments. Uh, that's exactly what we have to pay them, so that's what we levy. And the building fund is, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions on the general fund revenue levy, as well as tax or considerations? Any questions, concerns?
We do have a doubt motion for each, I know.
Well, that all started off, Chris. I have a number one. Let's approve the twenty-two, twenty-five, six general fund levy of one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four. Motion to approve.
Motion by Manstrom, is there a second? Second by Bernard, roll call vote, Manstrom?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Uh, next is approve the twenty-five, twenty-six miscellaneous revenue levy. Anything else?
Yeah, I changed that one so many times to fit the, in the three percent cap, so, well, it's got, it's not quite two.
I was gonna say it's.
Yeah, because I think it's like this fifteen thousand something, it's a million, so it's one point something.
Do you, do you remember what the maximum mills we could levy?
Twelve. I'll make a motion to approve the miscellaneous revenue levy, giving up twenty-four thousand.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Datsram, roll call vote, Datsram?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Motion, yes. Uh, approve tuition revenue levy. Motion by, excuse me, motion by Bernard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Manstrom, roll call, Bernard? Manstrom, Johnson?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Approve twenty-five, twenty-six building fund revenue levy of three hundred and fifteen thousand, one ninety-two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Datsram, is there a second?
I'll second. Unless I'm here, you know.
Second by Johnson, uh, roll call vote, Johnson?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Approve special assessment revenue levy of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six fifty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bernard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Datsram, roll call vote, Bernard? Datsram?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Approve the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund expenditure motion.
I'll make that motion, Chris.
Motion by Manstrom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Johnson, roll call vote, Manstrom?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Can't change that one, even if we want. Uh, approve twenty-five, twenty-six building fund expenditure of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one thirty-nine.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Datsram.
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, roll call vote, Datsram?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Okay, um, approve bank account code construction loan. We need, we're fortunate enough to get a fixed rate of two percent for twenty years for one point two. I say fortunate because it could be way worse.
Yeah. I'll joke.
Um, everything else out there was way higher. I don't know all of what to talk about because it's funny and spread. Um, they're willing to give it to us for two percent. Please somebody make a motion.
So would.
What else you wanna talk about? I don't know.
I'll second.
Who made the motion? I will stop. Motion by Johnson, second by Bernard, roll call vote, Johnson?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Motion, yes. Approve twenty-four, twenty-five state financial report and report for publication. This is just for the state.
Yes, well, so the, the long one is the one that goes to, I have to put in starters, that goes to then, to the state. And then the short one is the one that goes to newspaper.
Okay. So yes, this is just for our publication. Everything we just approved is in there.
Actually, no, because that's last year's members' report. The financial report is the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, so we will do the financial report. Well, they're both together, didn't they?
Yep.
One's last year's and one's this year's for publication.
No, they're both this year's. They're both here. They're both, no, the publication is just sort of abbreviated version of the long one that the state requires.
I thought you just said the last year's.
You did, you did, yes. They're not, they don't have this, the stuff you just approved is not in there.
Oh, that's where I.
Yes, that's, yes, I just wanted to be clear that that is all last year's.
I mean, did last year.
Yes. No.
Okay.
The patient stuff is all this year's part, we just approved this year's one too. Yes, yeah, we have a lot, a lot of.
But it's just for publication.
Correct, yep. So yeah, the long one is the one that goes to the state and then the short one is the one that goes to the general.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bernard, second by Manstrom, roll call vote, Bernard?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Provening LEA compliance report.
I'll make a motion to approve the LEA compliance report.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Datsram, roll call vote, Johnson?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Approve school annual compliance report.
I'll make that motion, Chris.
Uh, motion by Manstrom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, roll call vote, Manstrom?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Datsram?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bush, yes. Uh, community reports, financial, financial committee, we talked through email. We have an air compressor for sale, um, we don't use it, it used to be in, um.
Boiler.
Boiler, bro, I was, stop. Um, and it got moved out to the shed, we don't use it. Um, it, they were gonna wire it out there, but there's not enough juice to run it now. So it is useless for us. It's about a four thousand dollar air compressor, five hundred hours. Um, we thought we could start out advertising it for half that, see what it takes. So we'll start advertising it for two thousand dollars. Do we have a motion to sell something here? Okay. Could somebody make a motion to sell our air compressor for two thousand dollars?
I'll make that.
For this offer?
I'll make that.
Motion by Datsram, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, uh, roll call vote, Datsram?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Manstrom?
Yes.
Bush, yes. And then the second thing, uh, pricing for whatever nest finishes. We talked twelve, um, we, we talked four dollars, we had to go over thirty-five cents over cost. Um, and then I think we're paying fifteen cents for, um.
Taking temperatures, documenting it.
Yeah, packaging it, um, so we come up with four dollars. Um, I thought that was very reasonable, where you're gonna get a coke meal like that.
I was gonna say, is this a meal I'm making for our kids, like I'm making something different, right?
Same, it's just, it would package eight or nine more, one of them is kids of that age. Hopefully, they'll come up with something in the morning, tell them all the kids they have, still they, no, they made that date. And if that communication, they would accommodate, there's nobody here that could deliver, so what?
What about, if there's kids over there with dietary needs, like, is that on them to figure out something else? Like, we're not gonna be expected to make food that matched their. I don't know, I have, no, my doctor worked there and she popped that up because she knew some things and I was like, I don't know.
Royce was watching, so she texted me. I know she already accommodates the dietary needs here, so maybe it wouldn't be that big a deal to accommodate something unless it's something that would be off the wall.
Right.
It was.
But is that gonna cost us more? That we need to look at, basically.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Or do we just, I'm not too sure, I know, but do we just offer the opportunity, they can buy whatever the standard meal is? And if you need something outside, then that's on them to handle. Because you can't, they can choose, well, can't say stronger. You have to think carefully about choosing what you're gonna trade or accommodate or not based on what you have on hand or cost, because then you're getting into, you know, so.
I know Christine prepares the menu for the accommodations that we have at school.
Sure, and that is reasonable because that's our.
Yeah, yeah, so doing it for an outside store, so it, it depends on, I'm still gonna say it depends on what it is. If it's gluten free, which is already going back.
I'm just practicing.
There's documentation that's required from students signed up by a doctor for dietary instructions as well.
For the school.
Yeah.
Um, that have to be given to Christine for her to be allowed to make an alternative meal. Like, it has to be signed up, I guess it's like.
So then they have to eat the same.
Yeah, Jay just texted me, they will be, they provide the containers, they will be providing the containers daily. And somebody can order a nest full deck up. So it will be, I never thought.
I mean, I just, I don't know, I mean, I get it, right, but like, is that a slippery slope to start trying to provide?
But I mean, it doesn't use.
Not to.
But I mean, you feel like if you just say, this is what we have to provide you, and then if there's anything else that they can't eat, then the daycare probably has to figure out their supper, you know?
Yeah, 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 or parents, or parents, they are whatever.
Yeah, I don't really, if that's up to the daycare.
I agree, I know.
And I mean, I can see, like, they know we do gluten free meals around here, so if it's something like that, Christine's already made it, you know, but if it's something.
Is that something we all, we teach.
Right, yes, because we have kids that fall in that category, that's one thing, but if it's something different.
But do you think, like, would a gluten free diet require what you're just talking about? Yes.
And then the only challenge with that too is, that's the assumption that that's true this year, right? So that's the other piece of, I'll say that if there is a dietary, uh, situation like that and we were providing it, it would have to be sent there, we just, now somehow we have to know, like, if they weren't here, because they don't like, she means, that's not a chicken nugget. And that suit's gone, so we just need to cut that nature nuggets and get them back in the package. And they are also, I know that.
Christine texts the gluten free cost, so there is a.
Yeah, yeah.
And also impact packaging, because technically to be able to package your.
It's.
So I mean, I don't know how, I don't know.
Are we able to accommodate it?
It's dual. Yeah, I wish, like, like Jay said, they will be.
Yeah.
And, uh, so.
I mean, and maybe we leave some sort of circle back if we have a meeting a lot of, right, you know, we're supposed to be gluten free and it's more expensive and we need to adjust prices or putting on our end.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah.
In other words, right now it would be four dollars a meal. Um, and if they wanted something special, it's the price you have to accommodate. Yeah. My only question was legality of us selling meals to you, so. We're okay. Four dollars seems pretty reasonable, hopefully. Need a lot of care and care and. Oh, yeah, so it's, it sounds like it's ten or so or less, almost.
When they do this, like, through a written agreement that reads out, we agreed to provide lunches at this cost for kind of style, like, doesn't have to be fancy, but just have it in.
Yeah, I, we could have some of the contract, because it's only going to be served during school days. We're not, if we don't have school.
Right.
There, there will be no meals, so it will have to, have to be something written off where we provide these meals at this cost on whatever school's in session. If we have a snow day, obviously we're not providing meals, but if we're not here, they're not there either, so maybe. So, um, if everybody's okay with four dollars, then the motion is set the price for, I guess it would be for the orbit nest launch of the full size.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bernard, so-called vote Johnson.
Yes.
Bernard. Manstrom.
Yes.
Datsram.
Yes.
Motion is. Uh, policy committee.
We met at six o'clock prior to this meeting, um, there are two new policies. It's policy ACCB, protection of student victims of sexual offense, and GAVE, human trafficking and exploitation prevention and awareness education. Um, they are both required by, um, well, really, all of these are required by law. The legislature changed rules and so now we have to change our policies. So these are two new ones that we're adding to comply with state law. So these, we would need a, um, motion to adopt on first reading and then if you don't have any issue with them, to waive second reading. And just adopt how, adopt them as is right now.
So you want, we're gonna start.
Well. Because these, because these two are new and the rest are old ones, if we can just go with the ACCB and the GAVE on this one. And then the rest can be all together because they are old policies that will need to be re-adopted.
So you want ACC.
B?
B.
And G A E. Yeah, I didn't realize that when I, that they had done, I apologize, I would have put it in order of adoption.
Okay, so ACCB.
Yeah.
Protection for student victims of sexual offenses, and you say we don't.
Nope. We have Title Nine, which is related to this one, but this one has more specifics of. This is if we have a student in the building that has been a victim and the perpetrator is also in the building. Um, this is what we have to, the guidelines we have to follow.
Sure.
First, it's laws, we have to, well, it's legislative, sort of legislatively led.
This is never very modern type of, but on your ACCB, I have a quotation before the rest of the title?
I made notice of that too, yeah, so I will let Jane, yeah.
Okay.
Jane gets these from NDSBA, so, yeah.
And then don't push us to speak for us, another stop?
No, I think that should be a dash, because I think that's normally what it is, so, yeah. I made note of that as well, perfect, thank you.
Was there any questions or concerns out of the policy committee, you guys reviewed it?
No, not ones, I did have a question to like clarify that this was just relevant to a student who happened, juvenile, I hope.
Oh.
So it's, it's a convicted juvenile who is a student of art and also a student of this, or my first credit, you know, that.
Okay. Any question, reserve? Motion to adopt, to.
I'll make a motion to adopt ACCB and GAVE policies. Um. Anything like that. Okay.
You're good.
Do we go through wave with second reading or?
Oh, that's bad.
And wait, waiting is second reading.
Okay.
Sorry.
It didn't say that in the, I don't know.
I wasn't sure, I was gonna check later to make sure we could do it, but I waited for you to man. Okay, so motion by Datsram, uh, for ACCB adoption and waiting second reading, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Johnson, uh, so-called vote Datsram.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Manstrom.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Motion is. Okay, you're only to GAVE.
I actually will hold both, but.
Yeah, she did, she did, she did both.
Oh.
And you can, when they're, you can lock.
Yeah, I heard. I, I was.
Stand a little time.
Yeah, okay. Never mind.
Yeah.
I'll go back. A little bit, um, policy, uh, AVEA, one of those policies.
The committee didn't have any issues with that. Really, the only one that we have questions on, and hopefully Scott can answer this, is the, um, F, FE, extracurricular participation requirements. Um. They had questions about the practice of travel while suspended rule, um, because in the, the current policy, it states that they can practice and travel as long as they aren't wasting any school time. So I think I'd like to speak to your concerns.
I'm trying to hear your thoughts. So, yeah, one question was related to this suspension procedure. Is that, like, was the determination of not allowing practice related to the sus- suspension being about being suspended from school? Or was the thought suspended from extracurricular activities?
Yeah, that's how I s- I would see it that way too. There's a difference between they're suspended from school and part of their suspended for alcohol or whatever, that kind of suspension. I think there's a difference between those two, because we do allow them, if they have any legal key, uh, infraction, to still practice. And then as long as they don't miss school. The suspension from school, how we've treated it in the past, past process, uh, past procedure has been, if you are suspended for three days, you cannot practice or compete until the three days are up for the school.
Sure, so we're just, this is suspension from school, not from?
Well, yeah, what I want to clarify then is the way I read this, I read this as if the entire thing relates to being suspended from extracurricular activities with no relation to being suspended from school. So, we're on the same page, like, in thinking, but I just don't know that the interpretation of this language reflects that.
Right.
So it's maybe just clarifying that language.
And we can take a listen, if you want to turn it off.
I think so, because I just want.
I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, I think it's important to say, really, I'd love for them to be able to at least practice, I, travel is, I'm not advocating necessarily for that even, but to be able to continue to practice, at the very least.
What's, and if they're suspended from school?
No, just if they're.
You see it the same way to me.
I do too, yes, yes.
Jay says there are alcohol and academic policy allows them to practice suspended from school, you cannot practice for it.
I think I just need to clarify the wording that well suspended from school versus just well suspended.
From extracurricular.
Right, yeah, like.
Because this, this whole policy is around extracurricular participation requirements and it never notes in relation to suspension from school.
No.
So I think it's just meaning outside of that.
Well, or do you?
Or for me to clarify.
Right, for this purpose, I mean, because it is related to extracurricular participation, we could just add under, under extracurricular participation suspension and then this would be good to go.
Right, like maybe adding related extracurricular suspension procedure and then suspension from school procedure, however you word that, right? So that be clarified by all procedures.
I was just gonna add, like, to the title here, practice and travel suspended from extracurricular. And then change it to be are allowed to practice and travel with their respective teams as long as they aren't. Like, go back to our current policy, basically.
However, whichever way you want to do it.
Yeah.
I think.
Sure.
Whatever way, but having, like, yeah, just clarifying, I guess, whether it's extracurricular suspension from school suspension and then quite simple, would make it. You don't have to interpret anything, just say that.
Right, should we just stand on this one?
Yes.
Just clean it up.
Yeah.
And Melissa, you asked about.
Oh, yeah.
Going under academics.
Thank you, so up here, yeah, there's headings, so it says NDHSAA, academic standards, the Wyndham Public School also requires that most who participate in a contest if they failed more than one class in eligibility reports. There's no timeframe stated.
It should just be one month.
It does say one class, but we're just wondering.
If they failed more than one.
So they can fail one.
Well, no, but it's not, now it's if they're failing one.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they fail one, they fail. But it says in eligibility reports, it doesn't tie a timeframe, is that because it's just the unwritten assumption that eligibility is reported weekly?
So let's just say hypothetically, let's say the legislature at Wyndham decided they wanted to, let's say the legislature went to Thursday and they wanted us to be on Thursday and we decided to go to a Thursday, then we can fit that eligibility, eligibility report to fit that Thursday or Wednesday. Not that we're gonna do it, but if.
I mean, they're rewriting.
We're off the line.
So just add weekly eligibility.
Yeah, that's what's missing, it's like.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, in weekly eligibility reports.
Yep, yep, and then we gotta change that.
Okay. That was it. Yeah, that was really the only one, yeah, like, she said that we had.
Okay, well, we work that one, okay.
Do you, do you want me to throw a curve into this?
Sure.
No.
Yes, that's true, if a student gets, uh, thrown out of a game for fan behavior, there's a control of high school activities rule that they're out for two weeks.
It's like sports.
Sports and shit, yeah.
So if they get, like, red carded or whatever it's called, right, then they're out for two weeks?
Yeah.
From practice too, or just for, for, as a fan?
For a contest, yeah, a contest, but might be good to put some teeth in for practice. That hasn't even been discussed, A D's, not that I've heard, it's a good question. I'm asking for a question.
Is that already, that, that's already placed?
It's in, yeah, they changed, they changed that it was three games, now they changed it to two weeks.
Oh.
Because some, some, depending on sport, it could be longer or less, and then it's.
Yeah.
Any sport, even for that two weeks, you cannot go on and then a parent can't go on and then, I'm just saying, if a student ended up getting in trouble under that rule, they have to sit out two weeks. From any, any contest, they can't go to all, if they're a football player, they couldn't go watch volleyball, or they could watch elementary, uh, elementary.
Oh, okay. So it's attending or participating?
What's that?
It's attending or participating?
Yes, yes.
So if a football player gets in trouble in a volleyball game, they can't play in the next football game? Because, for, yeah, for those two weeks, because they can't.
Or go, or go to volleyball.
I think of that.
Are they athletes aware of this?
Uh, yes, you told them, but maybe not real aware.
I thought so.
I will say football players, yes, maybe not the volleyball.
Okay, yeah, wow.
I don't know if you want to put that in, because it's, it's the rule, I think they changed next year, they changed it from last year. So maybe we just put something in, uh, we will follow high school activities, susp- fan suspension.
Well, it, it does say the district shall enforce the requirements placed on extracurricular participants by North Dakota Law and the North Dakota High School Activities Association, so it's already in.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, you're good.
No, it's that there's just so much subjectivity in relation to fan behavior, whether you're a parent or a student in the crowd and whether it's addressed, sometimes.
Well, they're, they're saying whether you're a ba- basketball coach and a, a principal, and there's a star player over there, you know, he's excited over there, you throw him out.
Yeah.
Because then you won't have to play, you can play after.
Oh, that way.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, not being addressed with your own star player because you want him to play, you know what I mean, like, either way, there's so much subjectivity about whether or not. Okay, moving on.
Yeah.
Thanks for the curve, Bob.
Yeah. So the rest we can rescind first and then adopt on first reading, if you wanna waive second reading, if we are good with the policy, that's it.
Okay, so AVEA, we, we just rescind?
Yeah, well, we can do them all again, you know, we can do all of them again, yeah.
Rescind all?
Yeah, so it would be AVEA, BBA, BCAA, BCBA, FF, FGA, and GACA.
Then by like a motion to rescind everyone she just was.
She's the only one that has to know all the other names.
You guys know what she was meaning, so everyone she said were rescinding. Is that a motion?
Yes. I make that motion.
Motion by Bernard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Johnson, so-called vote Bernard, Johnson.
Yeah.
Manstrom.
Yes.
Datsram.
Yes.
Sure, you trust us, right?
Yeah.
Now we need a motion to adopt the new policy and waive second reading from everyone we just rescinded.
Do you want me to go to the beginning again?
Yeah, I think the board will.
Same, same.
Motion by Johnson?
Yep.
I'll second, second by Manstrom. So-called vote Johnson, Manstrom.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Datsram.
Yes.
Motion is. S R C T C report.
I've got that as you mentioned, that was the last one. Beginning of the year, now I'm excited, they got four, four for this year's bill with one little pickup as far as a piling, the toilet was gonna end up being on the wrong side. Toilet was made up being on the wrong side of the wall, which would, would have come later, so they.
Not ideal.
I demand a hard sell.
Much. The red fire.
Good?
That's it?
Clear?
Admin reports, I'm looking for you. Um, our start testing is completed in elementary, we have a great long meeting starting next week. Um, Wyngar Elementary is chosen to participate, uh, our fourth grade name test begin this year, we seem to get selected a lot. Um, we have things, I mean, that's inside the principal, uh, that's a national test, um, that we don't get individualized results. Whenever you hear about national trends with remaining things like that, that's that. So, they come in and do it, um, this year the junior high gets to join us, which is really fun. Uh, congratulations, Mrs. Osser, the student council are really nice and supportive, we, I think it was random, we were really well, the elementary kids loved it, we appreciate that high school getting us on the ball. Um, it was, it was fun. Uh, a few errors and confusing wording are being corrected, the elementary hamlet that we pointed out was me, just a few little clarification that I'm changing. One of which was the fact that I still had seven dollar melt tickets, um, instead of eight dollar, and just missed that apparently, I was trying to share it today, and I realized that last year I didn't buy a single melt ticket, a dollar and a quarter. So, I just had no clue, so I, it's now edited, but I went, missed that one somehow. Um, I was named a region five representative for N D A S P, um, so, it's kind of exciting, it's, uh, our region runs from South Florida border up to Finnisheren, and then over towards Valley City and Albusol. I'll be attending some meetings, holding meetings, um, Mr. Sri has held that role in high school and before, and, uh, so, um, kind of, kind of exciting. Uh, our N D S A plus results came in last minute on Friday, they announced that they were in our state testing from last year, and we were all really frustrated, we knew it was gonna take us this long to get them. I glanced at it on Friday, but I, this is a random test, it's random results, they look nothing like the last results. So, we're still all trying to figure out what to do with this, it's, it's really gonna be baseline data and figuring out what this all means. We can't compare it to last year, it's a completely different test, so, I'll start digging into that problem next week, um, more, to then figure out how to interpret it and how we can use it, um, and how it kind of relates to our school, um, so, I'll, I'll figure that out, that's gonna go. Um, report the faculty teacher, that Service Masters has been doing a really nice job, uh, in our building, so, they're really helping that decision, building it nice and clean. Um, let's see, elementary volleyball and football are in season, we'll see success, football plays at the Faraway Dome on Sunday, I think, uh, Mrs. Whitberg said against new record, um, Cheyenne, so, that's pretty exciting. For them, um, Mrs. Osser is working on the artist grant, uh, she's in line to bring a man named David Snyder in, um, in October, he's, uh, from Grand Forks area, he's been featured on Eric's Got Talent. He's been working, he's a pianist, he's been working with, uh, I think she said, was it, um, Snoop Dogg, and some other people that he's collaborated with in California, and then a bunch of things, but he goes to schools. We're gonna be his first small school, so she's worked with, uh, Kria and a lady named Melissa out there, who, um, has, she's the one who helped us get Kevin Locke in, if you guys remember that a few years back, named Eric, who dancer, and she's helped a lot of that. I think they're excited to see what this is gonna look like for a small school, but I think they're gonna work with our musicians, and then they're gonna do an assembly for K twelve, um, where he's gonna perform and do different things. So, more info to come, but, uh, that's gonna be pretty exciting, and I'm guessing we'll open that up to the public as well. Kind of, I don't know, I'm excited about it, it's something completely different, so, um, that's the, uh, M I S O three forms, which are the big forms that you fill out every year, this could be my main focus this week. Um, and then, uh, Wednesday's early release, we're written on crossbridge number themes, uh, units for the year. And then I also attended special education administrator meeting, the science of reading meeting, um, this last couple of weeks, and then completed my safety care recertification with Mr. Osser, which is all about de-escalation of students, that can be certified each year. We're, we give, thank you, from high school.
Uh, student of the month is Alex, Alexander Ward, uh, student award of excellence from the center, was Madeline Severance. Cell phone policy update, I told you, you didn't know how it was gonna go, but things have gone pretty well, like I would, we've only had a free, uh, first infraction so far this school year. Bunch of believers, um, seven through twelve, we have a student read it every day, I'm hoping that will be part of our, be able to use that as part of our economy as far as presenting to public, uh, I don't, elementary, I'm not sure.
Elementary, we do it in the classroom, and that was actually one of the first, so, it was the first day when it was announced over the full P A system, we had kids in the hallway that just kind of like, getting their coats on, and then they just. Stop, kindergarten were just bouncing around, and I'm like, we have a few parents, I mean, it was pretty funny. Um, but they do it in the classroom, each, a lot of them have that as one of the jobs for lower elementary, who's a pledge leader, so, yeah, they just do it individually in our classrooms, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's nice, because the kids, they, they get anxious about speaking, like, even though they don't have to see people, and they get to hear their name on the intercom early on, so. It's been going, it's been going well so far, you guys?
It's really fun.
I also like that you forgot when people actually talk in the hallways, and everyone's quite hoarse.
Kids on.
Awesome.
Very respectful, but I know.
For the most part, it's, it's gotten.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sure, that's.
Home, the homecoming court, uh, we have Kaden Johnson, Xer, Queen, Cal, Correcting, uh, William Gutsford, Mason Seeley, Allison Vitab, and Honor Vitab, and the rest of the court. Also, I wanted to give a huge shout out to Coach Ray Osser and the student council for all the decorating they did, they came in on Sunday, um, on their own time, and they put a lot of time and effort into it, and I, I think, I think kids and staff appreciated it. We have our suicide awareness, uh, tomorrow, um, we're, we're wearing purple and teal tomorrow, uh, we have, like, Corbin's crew, that's from Hankinson, and that would be, I think it's Carly Steinware. She, uh, it's her first presentation, uh, that she's doing in our school, and, uh, it'll be, uh, during the second hour, and after we break out in there, they will go to the classrooms, and we have some activities on how to, uh, open up communication and what they should do in certain situations, so. Uh, thank you, that was, uh, sources of strength, and one of our team, both wanted to do something for that, so. Coolest to them, uh, professional development, we have on Wednesday, interdisciplinary, uh, unit theme week in December, that'll be a part of the planning, the net rounds coming down from C E T, uh, to help with, uh, organizing that. Uh, senior college application days, it takes place on October second, and also on that day, we will have a poetry workshop. Busy, we have a very busy day on October eighth, we got the ninth graders going to Mob Cat, and the tenth graders are going to N D S S, and we also have picture retakes that day. P S A T, um, shout out to Hayden, uh, Mrs. Maup, she, uh, she did the training, so she can get the P S A T, the, P S A T, everyone, you know, they've had huge budget cuts for that, that test. Um, and she got trained to do that, so we'll have some of our juniors taking that task, and then, Mr. uh, Karen alluded to our name testing, that we get, we get to do, uh, with our junior high kids. Um, and then, so, I put Wyngar School Foundation, I, I, I think it's appropriate, I, I know that it's, um, it's a, it's own entity, but I, I wanted to give you an update, we have a, I sent a mini grant application out to the staff, and we have a little over nine hundred dollars to disperse, I think I had said that, uh, committee members, uh, I, I contacted them, and they are, uh, going to help make that decision, while they will make this, uh, decision. So the members are Collette Harden, Allison Kier, and Adam Bell, the three other members for that. Uh, activities director report, cross-country update, we have two students that are in it, um, one is, well, two in our district, one's homeschool, and then, uh, one is, uh. Cody, I can say Cody. They competed, they competed well, uh, Cody, I think, uh, sixth or fifth, um, and, and then also medal, and then, uh, Sam was having well.
Tonight, I think Sam came in second, and Cody came in sixth.
Second and sixth, thanks. Great, so that, I know that, uh, the coach over there is really happy to have, uh, that they're part of the team, so, that, that's, that's, that's a really good deal, um. Cheer team, we started with six members, I thought we had four, I don't know if that's the case, we're at three, so we, we only, we only have a cheer, they have four students, right now, they're, she's doing everything she can to get a fourth.
Take hearts. Looking at.
It's gonna have to work hard to ask.
Our, uh, football team's two and three, and we take on Hankinson, this coming Friday, uh, it's also Military Appreciation Day, so, anyone that's in the military, I, I believe they get their tickets paid for, and then, like, there's free popcorn from Lincoln State, um, and then they got our honor. Oh, I already see some members, um, from the community, so there's a form to fill out for that. Volleyball team has an eight-day record, overall record with, uh, which includes the tournaments. Then we have assault team, we have, uh, some new members, four new members, and they are Austin Conroy, Reese Osser, Teagan, Bowen Stinkle, and Michael Anderson. And they, the other returners are Jackson Kier, Jalen, Kirk Johnson, Maya, Catman, and Jared Kuchinski. And then our N D S Q choir festival, uh, Mrs. Kier, I'll be taking some students on October fifth, for the students. I have this one I have.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, superintendent reports, Ian Kapag, um, I want, I do want to touch on the top one, um, Jay's been working with, uh, Wells Fargo, I told him they no longer want to, um, manage one of the accounts we have for the Wyngar Education Foundation, so we've been looking, um, for somebody that would manage all of them, somebody else within Wells Fargo. Um, so, we will be meeting, um, as far as the Wyngar Education Foundation, committee will meet and discuss moving that, so. Just so everybody's aware, behind the scene, everything else, update, um, and, and, that's on Fire On Arms. Not impressing. So. Any additions?
I have to bring a question, what is the assault?
Student athlete leadership. There, that's a good question, because we're gonna, um, we're making that, we're gonna take a picture of the team and have them have posters of the reps in both schools. They meet with Mrs. Larson and I, and we talk about the, uh, athletic programs and ways to, and ways to help, help them, um, like, coming up with theme nights, things like that, who's gonna be in charge of that, and just, a way to, uh, communicate with students, and students can communicate with us.
Make a similar, like, parent night, and senior night, so, at least what Sam told.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was really a meeting, I love it, I got some notes.
No, that was me and Turner, next board meeting October thirteenth.